Everyone would please stand before we open our meeting. I would like to ask Coach Gooder-Ackery to lead us in the pledge and Captain Chris Buchanan to say a prayer for us.
Let's lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our gracious and loving heavenly Father, Lord, it is an honor to be able to come before you today, God, and thank you for this great nation. For we pray your blessings upon it, Lord, I pray your blessings upon this council. Thank you for the opportunity to live in a free country. For we pray and lift up our servicemen and women, our first responders. We ask that you would keep your hedge of protection around them, bless them and their families. God, you are the source of all knowledge and wisdom, God, and I pray that you would impart that on our servants today as they make important decisions for the city of Port St. Joe. Thank you for this special community. First, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. We will call the Jager meeting of the City Commission to order. And the first item of business we have is the consent agenda, which is minutes of our workshop on 12:03 and a regular meeting of 12:03 also.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Ashbrook to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Lowry. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Okay, guys, we have a special privilege today. We have the Dixie Youth Baseball Team who went to the World Series this year. And they're here for, we would like to recognize them representing our city in a great way. They've got some rings they're gonna get for winning the state regional championship. So if the coaches and the players would come forward, we'd like to recognize you. Let me tell you a little bit about this group. They've played together since 2017. They went on and won first place in the state tournament or district tournament, Aflac Chacola, the state tournament in Bristol, and they represented Port St. Joe and the state of Florida in the AAA Division II World Series in Lumberton, North Carolina. So they've represented us quite well. And before we recognize the kids, I would like to, I'd like to recognize the coaches because they dedicate their time away from their families, away from their homes to teach you guys about baseball, but not just about baseball, but about sportsmanship, teamwork, respect, and how to act when you're outside of the city and represent your city well. So I want to make sure you fellas, when you get these rings today, make sure you thank these coaches because they work mighty hard. And I'm not, I don't think all the coaches are here, but make sure everyone thanks them for what they do because it's a labor of love, I know, but it's also a lot of hard work. So at this time, I would like these coaches to call these kids names and they're gonna get a ring for their efforts. But before we do that, everyone give him a great hand for representing his city. All right. Coach Gooder, if you guys want to do the honors and...
Oh, I guess I'll do this without a microphone. Could everybody be on here?
Yes.
You guys here?
Yeah.
First one?
And you kids, after you get your rings, stick around, just make your way right over here, then we want to get a picture for the paper. Okay?
All right. The first one is Angel Mace, number seven. We've got Zay Jenkins, number six. All right, we have Eli Harris.
How are you doing?
This center fielder. Then we got Terrell Rip Williams. We got Jacory. Then we have Williams Shove, which he's not here today. So then we have Chef Caden Brown. We have Casey Reed Haskett. We have Easton Buchanan. All right, we got Duda Cherry. That's a heck of a hitter right there, y'all. We have Jayden Reese. And we got Stratton. This man got a one pitch strikeout while we were in the World Series. Coach Eric.
If we could, you get you guys to line up back over here, we can stand up back here.
Put the rings on to show them off.
Yep. Somehow. Do you want them in front of the podium, maybe?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, let's get them. All right, we're gonna get behind the podium.
You can kill anything, why don't you just knock it down?
Yeah, you can stand, we're gonna stand behind.
We can see the rings.
Get them in front of the podium.
Pull them rings, yeah, boys. Come out in front of the podium, there, guys.
We'll stand. Cheeseburgers. Cheeseburgers. With pride.
The Florida Marlins actually sent a care package for us because when we went to North Carolina, we had the Florida Marlins uniforms, which was kind of our theme, and we reached out to Marlins, they sent some care packages for all the boys.
Okay, guys, y'all have your seat. Coach Gooder, you got to stay up here just a minute.
All right.
All right. I think somebody out there said they wanted you to stay up here, so... All right, all right.
So on behalf of all of us parents, we can't thank you enough for the time that you put in with our boys. You opened your heart up. You was a big kid along with them. I always told him, he was the big kid with the driver's license that took him everywhere. So we just want to thank you for your time and what you did for them. We can, we love you from the bottom of our hearts.
Thank you very much.
So we want to present you with this.
Yeah.
So maybe one day, it will be worth something. You're welcome. Thank you.
Wow, that was awesome.
Good job, and thank you very much again for the way you represented our city. All right, guys, we're gonna move on. If any, if you gotta go back to school, go ahead and be careful in this weather. Scooter? Will?
Left a ring up there.
We'll move on shortly.
Left a ring up there.
Okay, guys, let's move right along. The next item on the agenda is the Building Department, but it's not time for their quarterly update. And the next item is the Long Term Recovery Committee. Ms. Nancy Stewart's here to give us an update on what's going on with that. And welcome again, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners, for having us here. Just two quick updates as it relates to the city. We are collaborating with CCDF and Diana Burket with 40 Auburn students that are coming in December 30th. UMCOR is also collaborating in terms of providing some blue tarps, and we're gonna be going out and re-tarping as many of the homes that have not had their tarps replaced since the storm. So we'll be doing that between December 30th and January 3rd. In the city, focused primarily on the north side, but we will get into some other areas if we have the appropriate time and resources. The second thing I wanted to bring up is we've been contacted by Legal Services of Northwest Florida. They want to begin monthly workshops, legal workshops for the citizens of Gulf County. Their first one, they're proposing to have January 15th. We've been in conversations with Mr. Hammond about the potential use of the fire department space in the back for those workshops to be held in Port St. Joe in the mornings, and then they'll be in Weewa in the afternoons. So they're gonna try to do every third Wednesday of each month, starting January 15th, if we can get that coordinated. So just wanted to let you get that update. That's all I have for you today.
Well, I know you gotta work hard, and we appreciate it, but I have a question about blue tarp. The blue tarp is just preliminary till wherever we get roofs for them?
Yes, sir. As a matter of fact, during that re-tarping exercise, we're gonna be doing very detailed estimates and prioritization to get roofs on. We have two volunteer organizations lined up to come in in March, and we have about $75,000 right now that's appropriated to do roofs, so we'll get as many done then as we possibly can. So on the right track.
Yes, we are. Questions? Anyone have questions for what they do?
No.
Thank you again, we appreciate it. Okay, PSJRA, Dave, is anything from that organization?
Just briefly, our next meeting is at noon, I'm sorry, on the 7th, and we have a workshop scheduled for that following Tuesday on the 14th at noon as well.
Good. Thank you. Okay, next item is number of city attorney. Our last meeting, we tasked our city manager in reaching out to attorneys and coming back to us with a recommendation for a city attorney, so Mr. Anderson?
Yes, sir, I do have a recommendation. If you turn to your package, you will see they do have a proposed contract for your consideration tonight. Actually be sending it to Mr. Clinton McCady. Have thorough conversation with him on Friday. What he's looking for is a contract, very similar to what you have with your previous city attorney, for your consideration here tonight.
Were there any changes to the contract in wording or in any means?
The only thing that was taken out, Mayor, was the previous one noted about an RFP, whereas this one, we actually reached out to them without going to an RFP. Everything else is the same amount, $4,500 that you're paying your current previous contract.
Okay, all right. What's the pleasure of the board?
Get an attorney as quickly as possible, man.
We need a motion to accept the recommendation of the city manager. Okay, so motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Langston. All right, discussion. Anyone? Anyone? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Public have any comments? Yes, sir, I'll let you have a comment. Yep, we just did five and a half. Okay, I want to say, but we're all working on this Robert Rule of the Board, right? I mean... We're working on an organizational... So that was, in that, is there any word where the public has any input? Yes, sir. Before you vote? Yes, sir. That is in the Robert Rule? Yeah. What does it say about that? Well, it says public have the right to speak. It doesn't say forever. But before you vote or after? During discussion, during discussion. I raised on by Robert, and then strictly my fault. And part B for sounding way out there, but let's don't, let's don't get in a big hurry on this attorney. I mean, it's not the end of the world. He was once here before, right? He was. Let's see, let's look at this real hard before all the cross pollination that's been going on in this fine city. Let's be real careful who we vote in real quick. And that's what I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to say in the right way. Yeah. Now that's, y'all voted real quick. Yeah, we did. I see that. Appreciate it. Yes, sir. Okay, whole business, Jim?
Yes, sir. The next item is Government Complex Grant. Mayor, myself, we're basically trying to look at some different options on property. Mayor, we have an update?
We don't. Last time I talked, George Gonzalez, he was having an appraisal done on the property that they had made available for us, and once they get that, they'll come to us with the price, and hopefully we can afford something. But that's where we are. So we're waiting on them, I'm sure it's gonna be January sometime.
What's the timeline on the grant?
June, I believe, June 30th.
Yes, we need to act pretty fast.
Yep. So we're moving on it, and they graciously made some available to us. We, they just have to jump through their hoops to make it available. So that's kind of where we are. All right, old business, City Commission meeting, date and time.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Langston, what we're talking today about?
Does everybody know how I feel about the time? As for meetings at 12 or 6 o'clock, I prefer 12. I said that I was gonna put it in motion to return to 12 o'clock meetings. I'm doing it because of thinking about my staff and the time, the meeting times in which they come in at 6, they may not get home to 8:30, 9 o'clock. If you have them at 12 o'clock, it can go until 3 or 4 o'clock, and we'll still be here and still can handle getting home and spending time with your family and doing things like that. So if, Mayor, if you want to allow somebody to speak up on it before we put it in motion or however you want to do it, it's fine.
Well, you need to put it in motion, get it second, we'll get into discussion. If you make that motion.
I motioned that we change regular public meetings from 12 and 6 back to 12 noon.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Langston, second by Commissioner Ashbrook, to have all our meetings at 12 o'clock and get away from the 6 o'clock meeting. So is any discussion among Commissioners?
I'd just like one more comment. You mentioned...
Then we'll open it up to the audience. Appreciate it.
You mentioned staff, and one of the things, you know, we inundate our staff with things to do at a meeting, and the last thing I want them to do is to go and go to bed and forget something. So it's nice to have them get right back to the office and start on what we've asked them to do as well.
I've said all along that I would support whatever timeframe we saw the majority of people attending the meetings, and I feel completely confident in saying there has not been a difference in the attendance from 12 to 6. Now, you have to factor in the topic of discussion. We've had topics at 12 where more people came, we've had topics at 6 where more people came, we just had a baseball team in here. But if you remove all those away from the issue, I think it's fair to say that there is not a negative impact at 12 or at 6. So I have no problem with changing.
Okay. Commissioner Lowry, you got anything?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Discussion from the audience. And we've talked, I've been up here several times on this issue now. I appreciate y'all's comments because, and Mr. Hobbes, you are right. They, some days they're standing room crowd only, but last week was a presence of one of them. A lot was on the agenda, a lot of people there, able to, able to get off. And my understanding, actually, I pulled an ordinance from 1991 or '97, and these meetings were adopted then for up till when it was changed a year ago for the people participation. Everybody worked day shift, everybody worked at the mill, blah, 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 and everybody could come here. That was the reason. Am I wrong? Now, the difference of 12 and 6, there's a lot of difference, in my opinion. Now, we talked about that earlier, and y'all actually voted on it July the 2nd, a 4-0 vote to go the 16 o'clock meeting the first Tuesday and one at 12 as we are today. Am I right? Okay. Four months ago, y'all voted 4-0, Mr. Hobbes was absent. Now, we can all agree on that. So why aren't you just being rolled up this soon? It was just voted on. That's my question. Why are we voting on it again? We met 50-50 in July, we've had four meetings, and now we go back to the other way. That's not consistency, consistency at all. Well, Commissioner Langston, if you want to respond to that, you may.
I can respond. I'm trying to make it consistent. Consistency is not 12 and 6 either. Consistency is, consistency has been consistent with time and days, so I would rather have them at 12 o'clock.
So you...
Twice, I would rather have it once a month, like every other government entity does. But I think that twice a month for a city, for the city is good. It allows people to attend, but they can't attend one meeting. So that's my point of view.
I do agree, every other entity around here, the county, the school board, guess what? They do, they used to have two meetings also. But y'all, as elected officials, what, I mean, you've got a 300% raise several years ago that were voted in, you actually voted on.
I voted on that because I don't, I don't think I was in that seat.
If you miss one meeting, you're making up a $500. Robert, listen, Robert. And I'm just telling you. We gotta move on. Okay, okay. I apologize. Okay, I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so how are we gonna handle this to be consistent the way we vote? That's what we're looking for, is consistency. That's my question. How can, how can we handle this to get back to where we need to be? I'm hoping this will be it. Do we need to use Facebook? Do we need to vote on it and tell the public after the fact? That's where y'all been going before, and we right back to it now. Okay. And on top of that, I'm gonna present something to y'all before y'all vote, just to stand up when I'm up here saying, may I approach the board? And I'll, I'll have to present something and get a set up, I appreciate it. Yeah, thank you. That's stating what I just spoke on. If you would like to talk about it, well, I'm here, not I'm gonna sit down. That's actually where y'all put it on Facebook, even after y'all voted on it. But everybody forgot about that. We voted on 79% on y'all's Facebook page to have one meeting a month, but now here we are. So... We gotta call a vote. Y'all need to be consistent with it. Call a vote. Appreciate it. Any more discussion from the audience? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm opposed. Most of the past 4 to 1. Okay, we're at the Fair Housing Workshop. We're gonna have to temporarily adjourn, adjourn the meeting and open a Fair Housing Workshop, conducted by Bruce Baustre.
Good, it's afternoon now. As you know, in the handout that I put on your desk earlier, the why are we here part, HUD is the funding agency for CDVG, and we're actively in a CDVG grant period now, and so we're required to hold Fair Housing Workshop, or excuse me, Fair Housing Activity every quarter. And I usually split those out immediately at the Downtown Marketplace one weekend a year. I do an ad in the paper, it is this workshop, and I have another outreach to Realtors and bankers in the community, which we'll probably be doing in January. As you know, the Fair Housing Act protects seven classes: race, color, national origin, religion, sex, which has been opened up to marital status, disability, which in the 90s was opened up to include AIDS, to make sure that that's a disability, and the presence of children. That ticker one can be overwritten in the case of adult housing where it's written into an ordinance or set of community standards that those homes are for 55 and a half families. And the prohibited acts are to refuse or rent, refuse to rent or sell housing, refuse to negotiate for housing or make housing available, deny dwelling, set different terms or conditions than you would for any other class, provide different housing and services, redlining, which is like to say this area is not open to that ticker group, or for-profit or suite owners to sell, should consider block listing. And to deny anyone access to membership facilities, open everybody, say in a club, some neighborhoods have clubs. Those are the basic tenants, and you all know it. Appreciate your signatures on this appendage sheet, that's also required of our group. There's not much else to it other than the practice by the community's Realtors and financial institutions. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. There's a lot more information that can be gotten off the HUD website. Be happy to do this to any groups if you'd like to have me attend, those are optional valid activities.
Have we advertised this advertisement?
Yes, we did.
So we've advertised?
Yes, sir, it was in the store this past year.
And I have a little poster for the lobby at City Hall.
Right, right. Any questions for Bruce? Anyone in the audience have any questions for Bruce and what the CDVG does? Anyone?
Thank you, Bruce. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
We have a question.
There is a question for you, Bruce, before we open.
Hi, Cassie Stonestone. Just had a question on that. Is that both Fair Housing, is that open to public or...?
That's for any provision of housing, public right.
So it's gonna be like a...
If you have a, if you own your own, say duplex, any, or quadriplex, any unit up to four, you can deny housing because you live in the same facility.
Or state property. So I was just wondering if it's something that you're, it's a workshop or something that the public's gonna have to do or...
It's something I would probably work with in networking at noon or some other activity where, or I'll advertise it, I'll probably send emails to all the Realtors offices.
So yes, wondering if you're gonna work with Florida Board and if we could get, give credit, put it in state.
I don't know about that, but we'll try.
Thank you. Anyone else? Question for Bruce? Okay, we'll, we'll close the workshop and reconvene the meeting under new business. The first item is ordinance 565, Small Scale Plan Amendment, SRS Land Company LLC, first reading. You'll find that on pages 5 through 39. Jim, do you have any comments on that?
Yes, sir, Mayor. We do have Mr. Ray Greer here from Stan Tech, does represent the client today, if you have any questions for him specifically. Hey, Ray, thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Ray Greer. My address is 2910 Cary Force Parkway, Tallahassee, Florida, and I am the applicant's representative. What we have is a one acre small scale land use amendment. This property is located behind the boat barn over at the St. Joe Marina. We are proposing, it is industrial today, we're proposing to change it to a high density residential. It will, as you're familiar, a couple months ago, we brought in the St. Joe Marina property itself, and changed it from industrial to mixed use. And, you know, they're based in... It changed it from industrial to mixed-use, and, uh, you know, they're basing, basically gonna do a mixed-use development, have both the commercial and residential blended into that development. Uh, this development, being high-density residential, be a, you know, a good transition from that, uh, development as you, you know, move away from the Marina itself. It is, um, adjacent to it and right behind it. It was included in the original PUD, this property was at one time owned by the St. Joe Company. So it was part of that original PUD, and then, you know, a few months ago, we did land use amendment and redid that PUD. This property came out, so therefore the PUD zoning no longer applies to this property. So we're also asking for the R-three zoning to be applied to it.
How many units per acre on the R-three?
Fifty.
Okay.
Fifty, Matts.
Okay. Okay. Guys, any, any questions? There, motion for first reading of, uh, ordinance five sixty-five.
So moved.
Motion. And a second.
Second.
We got a second already, I'm sorry.
Discuss.
Discussion, absolutely.
I'm gonna abstain as I've got a business relationship with, uh, one of the develop, developers.
Okay. Alright, guys, so there's a motion, uh, and a second for the first reading of ordinance five sixty-five, which is changing, uh, parcel from, uh, industrial to high-density res- uh, residential, which is R-three. Any discuss, more discussion, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four oh one extension. Jim, would you-
Yes, sir, Mayor. Ordinance number five sixty-five, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan, future land use map of the city of Port St. Joe, Florida, by and through procedures required for small-scale map amendments pursuant to authority under state statute section one sixty-three point three one eight seven, specifically changing parcel ID number zero four five nine four dash zero three zero R from industrial to high-density residential, R-three. Providing for the amendment of the zoning map of the city of Port St. Joe, and providing for repeal of any conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Alrighty.
And Mayor, at this point, this will be brought back before you, uh, the plan is to get it to you the first meeting in January.
Second reading and adoption?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Excited about all this development, for sure. Alrighty, the second item, ordinance five sixty-six, which is a large-scale plan amendment. Uh, property owner is David Warner, and, uh, this is, uh, large scale's gotta be transmitted to, uh, Department of Economic Opportunity, uh, so we have to have a review of it, first reading, transmit, transmit it to them. So, uh, you'll find that on pages forty through seventy-eight. Do we have questions, uh, for Ray about this development?
Mayor, we'll have to abstain from this one as the owner of the property is my employer.
Okay, alright. Now, any, uh, anyone else here, uh, representing, sir, you wanna come forward and say the name and-
Yeah.
We see if there's questions, uh?
Hey, my name is Luke Rosansky, Dev Lab, I'm a developer.
Okay, alright. Thank you for coming. Okay. Is there a motion for a first reading and transmitted to DEO on ordinance five sixty-six?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hoffman, their second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Langston. Discussion, anyone? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, most of the pass four oh one extension. Jim?
Yes, sir, ordinance five sixty-six, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan, future land use map of the city of Port St. Joe, Florida, by and through procedures required for large-scale plan amendments pursuant to authority under state statute section one sixty-three point three one eight four, specifically changing parcel ID number zero three zero three seven dash zero 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 and parcel ID number zero three zero four zero dash zero zero one R from low-intensity commercial to medium-density residential, R-two, and providing for repeal of any conflicting ordinances, providing severability, and providing for an effective date.
Alright, very good.
And Mayor, how this one will work, we'll actually transmit this one to Department of Economic Opportunity for comments, and then it'll be brought back to the board, uh, Mr. Ray Greer and I have heard back from the, uh-
Okay, alright. And of course, for the public, uh, when the, uh, development order is applied for, uh, the whole design and concept of, of what they're trying to do will be, be out there and made public to everyone so they can see what, uh, what developers are planning on. It's, uh, an exciting time for the community, we're getting some housing, we're getting some workforce housing, so it's, it's, it's a great, great thing for them. So, next item then is a, uh, is ordinance five sixty-seven, which is a plan, uh, plan unit development, which is a PUD, uh, also requested by David Warner, and, uh, first reading, and, uh, for that is, uh, on pages seventy-nine through eighty-five of your agenda packet.
Mayor, I'll have to abstain again, same conflict.
Alright. Is it noted? Okay, is there, is there a motion for ordinance five six seven? Tell me, Mr. Mayor, okay, is the motion by Commissioner Lowery, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hoffman for first reading of ordinance five sixty-seven. Discussion, anyone having discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passed four oh one extension.
Ordinance five sixty-seven, an ordinance of the city of Port St. Joe, Florida relating to and amending the zoning code, amending the city of Port St. Joe zoning map, designating and establishing the Madison Garrison Plan Unit Development Zoning District, adopting certain regulatory requirements for the Madison Garrison Plan Unit Development Zoning District to supersede requirements in the city of Port St. Joe zoning code. Providing for repeal of any conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
I'd like to add too, then, we'll bring that PUD back for final reading with the adoption of the large-scale land use amendment once it comes back from the state.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any more questions, Ray? That property is across the street, in case anybody had any ideas about it. We'll have neighbors, more neighbors. Alright, let's move right along to the Maddox Park Task Order.
Yes, sir, Mayor, we continue to work through our park after Hurricane Michael, and one of the issues we looked at is on the Maddox property, there is a low area, uh, that's very hard for the city staff to maintain, and we would like to look to the Corps of Engineers or see if there's any options to make improvements to that property. We're not sure exactly at this point what we can do, uh, but we've been working with our city engineer to figure out what we need to do, the courts actually tried to look at it. Uh, he suggested that we need to go to the Corps of Engineers to get approval from them. With y'all's blessing, we would like to be able to utilize that section of the park. There's a lost area of the park that we think we could, that we could showcase and utilize more.
Very good. Go ahead.
I have a question. Um, Jim and Clay, you may be some assistance for this. I believe we discussed, and I know Jim and I discussed this recent, recently, but that piece, where the bridge is or was, there was some discussion about piping that where it goes out to the bay. Um, Clay, has there been any work done on that, on the county side, or?
They haven't done any work, but they have the permits for it.
They've got the permits for it, so, um, so all, that piece has been done, so what we're talking about maybe doing is the connector piece?
Right, it's across the street, yeah, across Captain Fred's place. It goes back toward the lighthouse. It's hard to see that there's really even a ditch there because it's catties and everything grown up, but that's, that's what this is.
What did? So I'm trying to make sure this is the exact area I'm talking about, where, where that bridge crosses over to the water.
By the TDC?
Yeah, right by the TDC.
That, that ditch has already been permitted.
Okay.
The county has that permit.
So I'm guessing there would be a way to possibly pipe that?
Yes, sir.
And go on out to the bay with that?
Uh, their permit's not all the way to the bay, but it's beyond where that bridge was, so the bridge is gonna be put back.
Right.
That was kind of the intent of that, so it's down to, uh, I think it's about the tree line.
And, and my idea of this is to cut back, the same way to cut back on maintenance. Uh, because I know they spend a pile of time on that ditch, so, um, it, it may be something where we can work some, something out with the county and, uh, share cost or something with the pipe or whatever, um, in the future, so, I mean, I'm all for it.
That's a good idea, if we could get this, uh, get this permitted, uh, do all the work at one time, you know, share the cost. Good idea. Any, any questions, comments on, on the proposal from, uh, Dewberry to, uh, try to get the permits for this, for this project? Thirty-five hundred dollars, it's, uh, what they've gotta do is pretty reasonable. We need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion by Commissioner Hoffman to approve the task order.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ashbrook. Any more discussion? Discussion from the audience? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passed five oh, so we can get some work on that. Okay, uh, next item, Jim, is Triumph application.
Yes, sir, uh, Commissioner Hoffman wanted to talk to you today about it.
Um, then let me take a moment. I believe that, uh, city of Port St. Joe should look serious at putting in an application from the Triumph Board. I believe that, uh, the Triumph Board is more than willing to assist the city in, in different areas. I, I have talked to Jim about a couple of ideas, uh, that would, uh, help with maybe some new water and sewer lines, possibly moving to underground electric lines, uh, from Highway seventy-one all the way to Avenue G, to include, uh, uh, the future plans of MLK corridor. That was just one item that I came up with, and I came up with that one pretty quick. I, I think what I'm asking today is the commission's support in coming up with ideas, projects, and then moving forward with an application. The application that I'm supporting and proposing would be an application solely from the city of Port St. Joe. Uh, I, I realize the application process can, uh, include the county. I, I would ask that we support the idea of working as just the city of St. Joe in, in applying for this particular, um, Triumph grant, and that, that's what I like to do today is, is ask for support and then move forward with some ideas.
Okay, comments?
Yeah, it's, it's a no-brainer, Mayor, I think there's money out there, uh, if you know what it can be spent on, definitely do their, you can do that research and see what we might qualify for.
It definitely has to be some kind of economic development impact from it, and, and, uh, creation of jobs, and I think all of you, what you said, would, uh, the, uh, economic viability of downtown is, is to have really good infrastructure and, and the starting of the MLK, uh, Carter project, uh, it's gotta have good infrastructure, so all of that is just, I think, that's a good idea.
So it's-
Great idea.
And I'll support any idea that, that may trump that one. I'm not dead set on that one, that one was just something that we kicked around, me and Jim. Uh, I think the, the thing we have to focus on is applying for the money, and, and then we can figure out exactly what we want to apply for, but, uh, I, I think they're willing to help the city at this time.
I do too.
I, I'd like to say something, I think that's a, that's an idea, anywhere that we can find some funds to help us with anything within the city, without us having to go inside our budget or, or anything like that, that's an excellent idea, and I'm one-hundred percent for it.
So, so what you're asking for all of us to come up with some ideas, kinda, and?
Right, just start, at this point, start thinking about, first of all, that we are going to agree to apply.
Yeah.
And then we gotta figure out who, uh, who is the one that would fill out that application. I'm not sure about that, we may have to, uh, look at our grant writers, we may have people in, in-house that can do it. It's a pretty lengthy process, but we're in a, a really good spot. We have the person that used to sit on the Triumph Board, who's now our representative for the, uh, the state, so we can rely on Jason's expertise, and we also have a person that lives here in Port St. Joe that's now sitting on that board. Uh, we should take advantage of that, listen to the, their guidance, their suggestions, and then come up with a, a plan on how to get this done. And it's not a, uh, an easy task, it's a lengthy grant, so I, I just think we need to start moving in the direction of applying for the funding.
Well, why don't we, uh, entertain a motion to move forward with a Triumph application? That way it'd be formal and, and, uh, formal approval process, and then, then staff can, can run with it, uh, or find who we need to work with to, to apply for one. Once we get that, uh, which, we know which way to go, and that way, then we'll say this is what we want to apply for. Is that your idea?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll make that motion now, that we, we move forward with the process of applying.
Triumph application.
Exactly.
Okay. Alright, there's a second there?
I have a second.
Second, Mr. Langston. Okay, discussion, any commissioners have any more discussion? You want from the audience? Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passed five and oh. That's, that's wonderful. Okay, uh, resolution twenty nineteen dash ten, scallop season. Jim?
Yes, sir, we had a citizen actually brought, they say, copy of one that was actually very similar passed at the county level. Uh, I think we saw the success we had with the scallop season last year, moving it back, so staff recommendation, let's, let's support each other in trying to move that scallop season back, uh, for the betterment of our bay and our community.
Okay, discussion?
And that's, that's moving it August, to August sixteenth to September fifteenth, right?
Yes, sir, that is very similar to what was done last year, I think these are dates. This is the one that was actually, uh, Mr. Doug-
Doug Kelly.
Doug Kelly brought it.
Yeah. The county approved it, I think it's wonderful. Uh, we, folks have lived here for a long time, always known it's better to, to harvest late than it is early, and, uh, it's, it's beneficial, so I'll entertain a motion to, for resolution twenty nineteen dash ten.
So.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Ashbrook, there's a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lowery for resolution twenty nineteen dash ten. All, uh, discussion, any more discussion? Discussion from all of you. Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passed five oh, Jim, you want to read the resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Resolution two thousand nineteen dash ten, a resolution to the city commissioner of the city of Port St. Joe, Florida, supporting the future St. Joseph Bay recreational scallop season to remain on current commencement date of August the sixteenth, each calendar year through September fifteenth or near as possible.
Very good. We'll move forward, and, uh, you'll forward that on. Is Mr. Kelly gonna come by and pick this up, or who's he transmitted to FWC?
Yes, sir, I'll fix that, I think Mr. Hoffman could probably help me out with it.
Okay, okay.
Is there any way we could add something about black bears in this thing? They're a little too late.
Yeah. Okay, uh, next item, Rotary Club Civic Club Project, Mr. Jim Sickles is here, would you like to come forward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Jim, for hearing me today. Uh, I'm here as a representative of the Rotary Club of Port St. Joe. Uh, as most of you know, Rotary Club is a worldwide organization, they've done a lot of good, uh, throughout the world. Uh, one of the major tasks they've taken on was the elimination of polio, which they have succeeded at. Right now, there's maybe a handful of individuals with polio in the world. Uh, they've worked with numerous organizations, the gate foundations and that, to help this and make it happen. Within the city itself, uh, the small group that we have, totaling of nine people, are very determined to help the city, help the community and the people within it. We've gone and we've painted the inside of the senior center, we've replaced their toilets at the senior center, we've sat on, in on their rock-a-thons for their, uh, donation money. We've worked with the Salvation Army, uh, ring the bell for Christmas, things of that nature. Uh, we've supported a lot of activities, and recently, we've looked at, how do we help the city itself? One of those items were the Florida Forever property. If you're not familiar with it, that's a far end of Eighth Street. Right now, there's one small pavilion with a table and one damaged bench, uh, that was damaged during the storm. I've had a discussion with Jim on this property, it was granted to the city through the state of Florida, uh, with some stipulation- It was granted to the city through the state of Florida, uh, with some stipulations on what you can do, what you can't do with the property. One is to help to upgrade the property for the public, I believe. Is that a correct term, Jim?
Yes, it did call for some low-impact, uh, activities for the communities.
And what we looked at, uh, there's a three-phase process, which I've outlined on my hand-drawn document, since there is no plot map for that property at this time. We would like to put in three benches across the waterfront there, up far enough that the water doesn't get to it. Uh, I've put a copy of the benches that we would like to order. They're of polywood. Uh, after talking with Public Works, they put some in downtown and some have not survived very long. Uh, according to their manual, it's a twenty-year guarantee, which, uh, as the Rotary Club, we would follow up on their guarantee if they started to fall apart. That would be phase one to put the three in. Uh, I've talked with John. Uh, he has the ability and the time at this moment, or within the near future.
At some point. I believe it was it.
To install these. And what I'm asking for is the approval of the council to go ahead and do this with just the three benches at this time. Down the road, we would like to put a second, uh, table in there with a small gazebo over the top, about twenty feet apart. Uh, long-term, working with Jim, the state and Department of Transportation, to put in a gravel or whatever drive-through, so people aren't trying to get over that curb. Uh, they have a barrier in most of it. If we can get a short drive-through in there, there's a lot of people that use it to go kayaking in that area. A lot of people like to go and watch a sunset. By putting the benches in there, I think it gives them a perfect place. I've talked to Jim. He's taking his family there and a few other people to go out. And the kids can be by the water, that's shallow enough for the kids in the water. And we'd like to help support this. It also helps the improvement of the waterfront through the comprehensive plan.
Great idea. We, we appreciate the Rotary Club, what, what you guys do with the small numbers. Rotary Club St. Joe's got a long history, so I'm, I'm glad it's continuing to.
They are very determined to do that.
Yes, very good, very good.
And the, the money itself will be coming from a grant from our district office, uh, that we were given for, to support heli, uh, hurricane relief and the community.
Any, any questions for, uh, Jim?
Would Rotary be interested in buying some pickleball courts?
Uh, not at this time. If we had a little more control on them, that would be a possibility.
Okay, uh, need a, uh, entertain a motion to approve Rotary Club's, uh, project for the Florida Forever property.
Now, would that be approval for all three activities, even though they are long-term, or just for the benches at this time?
I would, as far as I'm concerned, it would be long-term, but you're going to have a challenge with your parking, but that, that's not necessarily as much to us as it is the state.
It is right on the curve there.
Yeah.
Like, is it coming out of, uh, the Cape? There's no possibility to cross there.
Yeah.
You'd have to turn around to go back. But currently, right now, when you're coming through town, you have to go pass that one little barrier and then you're turning in to try, what we'd like to do is just put kind of a drive-through in.
Right.
I know growing up as a kid, they had a lot up along the highway. You'd go on Sunday trips and all you do is pull off the road and you can have your lunch or whatever you want. I think it'd be a nice spot.
My motion was basically this piece of paper.
Okay, the motion was for the?
This plan.
Handwritten, drawn. I don't see any parking on there.
No, I did not. It didn't count because.
Okay, his, his motion is for the, the benches and the, uh, tables.
Small gazebo.
Right, right. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Hoffman. Any further discussion? Just for the audience, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign, most pass five o'. Thank you again.
We'll have the benches ordered, assembled. We'll find out where John would like us to drop them off. And if you can tell me the price of the concrete, we'll take care of that issue.
Great. Thank you, Jim.
Appreciate it, John.
Thank, thank you, brother.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, any other new business that we haven't, uh, gotten on the agenda? Anything good, new visits? Okay, we'll move on to Public Works. Mr. Grant?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Thank you. Last meeting, we discussed the traffic cabinet, uh, at First Street. Since that meeting, FDOT through, uh, Mr. Cliff Johnson and Kenneth Shiver have agreed that through the Forest Missouri Clause in our current contract agreement, FDOT will reimburse the city of Port St. Joe for that cost. So.
Great news.
What I need from the board today, Mayor, is, is approval to purchase the cabinet and the pedestrian signals through Griffin Traffic Signals, which is our signal contractor, uh, for the amount of twenty-five thousand four hundred dollars. Um, Griffin actually has a cabinet in stock, so we were very lucky from that respect. There's no way, you know, once approved, he'll flash it right after the holidays and stall it for us. Uh, we'll get that signal cleaned up because it needs to be cleaned up. Mike, at that point, would, would send the reimbursement request to FDOT and they would give it to the city of general.
Fantastic. Motion to approve the purchase now.
Okay, motion to approve. There's a second?
Second.
Second for discussion, go right ahead.
John, you hundred percent on that, on getting that thing cleaned up?
Hundred percent, yes.
I can, I don't, I avoid that line now.
It's painful. It, it is, very much so.
And we do have an attachment here, an agreement that, in the first part of it, that they'll pay us back, you know, some, so, um, look forward to getting reimbursed, getting in and getting reimbursed, so. Okay, so, second stand?
Second.
Any more discussion on it? Any discussion from the audience? Get the city safe for twenty-five thousand. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, most pass five and o'.
Mayor, that's all I have. Any questions from the board?
You about to get called up?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Larry, it's your turn.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Uh, just for, uh, the record, uh, the water plant has passed our, uh, fourth quarter disinfectant by-product sampling. We passed it for the fourth quarter and for all of two thousand and nineteen, and we were well below the EPA standard this year at all our sites.
Fantastic.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for your work.
That's, I appreciate it. That's all we have.
Good news. All right, West Water Kevin's not here. Any report, anyone have anything on West Water? Jim, you have anything that needs to be brought up?
Uh, Kevin, did what you know, he's continuing to replace the filters, so that is what he's working on in the next two to three weeks. Plans to start spraying again the first of the year.
All right. Mike?
I, I don't have anything. We are continuing to work our FEMA recovery, uh, funding and insurance. Insurance is asking us to wrap up, uh, our final request, so we're working on those last few requests with our insurance company. But everything else is moving on.
How much longer are they going to be here?
The insurance?
FEMA helping.
Oh, well, FEMA, it, well, all of our projects are in, in motion, right? And, and so we've received about twelve of them that have been obligated and we've received the money. Um, and so there's about, uh, fifteen or twenty that are still in process. Um, so, uh, hopefully we're more than halfway.
Will they, will they hold our hand all the way through the process, do they?
They will. They, they've given us a new, uh, contact and he's, he's come in and he's here for, for, for a year. And he's just started about three months ago, so, so, yes, they will hold us through the process.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, Mike. Mr. Clay?
Yes, sir. Not a lot for you today. Uh, your last meeting guest about, um, the trail grant paying for lights on the tennis court. And we sent that up the flagpole, but I don't have an answer back from him yet from the grant books, but, uh, so you can get that and let you know. Uh, the road paving, they did some of the patches that were on the list to do, but they're still, I mean, the ball's in their court to come to Clifford Center Park. So, as soon as, they let me know, I'll pass that on too, but they, they know the ball's in their court. That's all I have for you.
Questions from Clay on that? Of course, we probably expect them to, when they get a bigger job around, they'll do that too, to mobilize for that little project, probably.
Yeah, I don't know if it's related, but they've been working pretty hard to move the park away the last week or two. So, they asked them to do that.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Clay. Appreciate it. Oh, I'll ask Clay too. If you filled out, uh, are you familiar with Triumph applications? Little bit?
We've worked on some. They are, like you were talking about, there, a lot of information that goes into them.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not going to claim to be an expert, but we certainly.
Yeah, I know, I know you're working, Jim, I know. Thank you, Jim. Okay, code enforcement, uh, we're moving on, getting a lot of work out of those guys. We've got a, we've got a, a new guy's been hired, I think. Jim, you want to, if you officially announce that, or?
Yes, sir. Mr. Fennell has been training the past week, so he is officially on board, working with Mr. Furkin, trying to get training and get it up to speed. So, yes, we do have two part-time co-enforcement officers. They'll also look in your, uh, handout you have, upcoming code enforcement hearings. We're starting the process. You have a new special master in place. These are ones that are not in compliance. Uh, code enforcement has been trying to get, uh, probably fifteen to twenty that are not in compliance, that code enforcement has asked, but they haven't had any success. So, at this point in time, we set up the hearings to go to special masters. Special master are here, uh, from both sides and make a recommendation as to what needs to be done to, uh, correct the problem. So, there's two of them that are there for you today for consideration to send on to the special master.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, we've got laws on the books and, and like Jim said, there's roughly twenty that are terrible. And bottom line, we got to get them cleaned up. And, um, yeah, the neighbors are, uh, dealing with these issues. Um, I get calls. I know you all, you all probably do. Um, but, uh, it's just something we're going to have to get through and deal with.
Yes, I, uh, you, I don't want to interrupt you. Go ahead.
I'm good.
I, uh, I talked to, uh, Mayor Brutniky in Panama City, uh, last week, and we talked about this issue and they're going through the same issue. Uh, we talked about liens versus putting on property tax bill and all that. He, they've got an ordinance in place. He said he'd be happy to share with us, uh, that, uh, what's cleanup cost on, uh, property tax bill. And, uh, it's worked for them. It would be a, a little more advantageous to us, I think, doing it that way. Of course, a twenty thousand dollar cleanup on someone's property and put it on the property tax, that's pretty hefty property tax for the year. So, I'm not sure how they work through that. I plan to find out. But I do think we need a little more teeth in what we do, because the only thing we have in place now is placing a lien on the property, which means we'll never get paid until the property's sold. And most cases, that's not going to happen in our lifetime, so, so I do. I think our former, uh, attorney, Albert, brought something to us about, uh, the property tax situation and, and, uh, so, we've got a, a partner in Panama City that's willing to share that with us. They've already jumped through the hoops. And so, uh, I'll, I'll continue to reach out to them and, and bring it back and see what, uh, see if we can just adopt it pretty much moving forward, if that's what the board wants to do.
I have one comment.
Yes, sir.
I, I think if we look back at, at what we have done in the past six months to a year, uh, it's clear that we are serious about managing these properties. Uh, we went as far as voting and approving the destruction of the house. So, I, I think we're committed to doing what needs to be done. And I think that we have all these rules in place and we have all these ways of, of getting these houses cleaned up. But we don't need to lose sight of the personal side of this. And I don't think we've done that in the past in any way. I'm not implying that. I'm just saying that as we move forward, let's make sure we don't get so focused on what can we do, but we also look at, is there other avenues out there? Uh, and it may be that there may be a civic group. We may ask a group like the Rotary Club, uh, could they help some of these people? Because I look at this list and we have two, and I know one of the two on the list might not physically be able to do all that needs to be done at their house. So, uh, I just want to remind the board that we're aware of that and that if there is a way that one of these committees can help the city and get the property cleaned up, we utilize that. That's all I have.
I, I, I think the optimal word that you mentioned was help, uh, is there a way we can help folks? Is there any way in our power to help folks, uh, within our, I'll say our budget? Instead of putting, dropping a big hammer on someone, uh, let's, let's see, there's a lot of resources around here at present time. And you're right on, Commissioner Hoffman, we, we've got to do that. So, uh, anyway, so in front of you is, is the city manager had, uh, a couple of folks that need to be, uh, sent on to the special master. So, uh, you need a motion to send these on?
That would be great.
Okay, must pleasure the board. Okay, there's a motion to move these two, uh, individuals on, uh, to the special master for code enforcement hearing. Is there a second?
Second discussion.
Second of discussion, our Mr. Grant.
I just want to say that, uh, it's important that we look at each and every one of these by, uh, a case-by-case basis, uh, considering who, who, who they are. I mean, elderly and people of that, that nature. But at the same time, we have to move forward with, with the cleanup. And sometimes, um, we have to do things that we don't want to do in order to move forward. But if we just take our time, like it's going before the special magistrate, and I'm sure that during that hearing, those things will come up, you know, but let's just go on through the process and, and, and most likely at the end, you know, I, I'm sure that we'll come up with a, with a good decision on a case-by-case basis.
Very good, very good.
Yeah, I, I agree with Commissioner Langston. I mean, I mean, we, I know both these individuals, um, and, but the neighbors are having to deal with these, these problems. And, and, um, as much as I hate it, we've got rules on the books and it is what it is. So, we'll have to get them up.
I, I actually asked Jim about these two individuals this morning. These are continual violators that, that didn't just come to us, just, they just picked two out of there. These, these two individuals have been continuous for years, not just recently. So, I, I think it's time that we got this property cleaned up.
Sure.
Best we could. So, is your second stand?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any further discussion, discussion from the audience? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign, most pass five o'.
Mayor, we'll get the hearings set up and advertise in newspapers. But you're exactly right. Compliance is the main thing. We hope these issues will be taken care of, whether by the individual or they can find somebody to help them out and then we don't have to have the hearing at all.
All right, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything.
Don't have anything?
Merry Christmas.
Thank you for the job y'all did at, at Christmas parade.
Wow, it was great.
Good turnout.
Team effort. It was a great turnout.
Yeah.
I got one, I got one thing.
Okay.
Um, I had someone come to, yeah, you know, we planted those orange trees on MLK and I had an officer to, um, tell a, a citizen that they shouldn't be picking, uh, oranges off the trees. I mean, that's what we put them there for, for, for the picking. Not, it's different if they're breaking the limbs or anything like that, but, I mean, that, 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 that's ridiculous. I, and, and the guy said that, um, he says, when we pick the orange, the police will pass by and tell them, hey, you don't want to see them in there no more. So, let's try to make sure that they know that, that the food is for the, for the community. Unless they're trying to destroy the plants. That's the message.
Where are these orange trees at?
MLK.
I, I saw some. I didn't realize there was orange trees.
We planted them on there.
It's time to pick them after Thanksgiving. It's time to get them all.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
You should check everybody.
All right. Anything else, Chief? Okay. Ms., Ms. Charlotte, before you, uh, turn over, do you want to, uh, thank you for the job you did on, in the parade? It was fantastic. We had eighty-five entrants and she organized that thing and coordinated with, with John and the chief and all concerned and, uh, we appreciate that effort because it was great and a super turnout, as well as a lot of entrants, so.
Thank you. It was a team effort. Everybody had something to do and they.
Everybody had something to do, and they did it.
Yeah.
But we just appreciate the community involvement and everyone wanting to be in it. It all worked out well.
Yes, it did. Okay.
The Christmas ad on page ninety-two was for, to decide if y'all would like to do one. It's been two years, I apologize, since there was one in the paper. But we got a call Friday afternoon. There was an early deadline, and they failed to tell us upfront. But they said we could run it for a New Year's ad if you would like to, if you're interested in an ad at all.
Okay. Most pleasure, the board.
When will that come out?
It would come out the week after Christmas. It would not make the cutoff for next week.
Before New Year's?
Yes, sir. Should, or the first edition in January.
I don't have a problem with just having to change the ad, you know? Say, you know, something about New Year's, having, you know, healthy and happy New Year, something like that.
I'm good.
That's good. Everybody does that, that has to start for New Year's from everyone in the city. Okay. A motion? Motion and second, second. Any discussion? All in favor, I?
Aye.
Those same sign, five oh. All right. Good deal. All right. Now, that all from Ms. Charlotte?
Yes, that's all.
Okay. All right. Citizens to be heard. Anyone in the audience like to speak? Somebody?
Y'all put more of that, anybody needs any oranges? I've got some for you, y'all. Y'all send them my way.
All right.
Don't see anybody getting arrested for that. Can I approach the bench? Can I approach the bench? I'm using a lot of ink later. Let's talk about the Florida statutes, if we might.
Kind of make it a read and digest version, if you can.
Okay, I think I can read it from my heart right now. What I presented is actually, where are we at on the TDC money that this great city deserves their fair share of, that we've been brought up last meetings, and now it's gone off the landslide? It's disappeared. Where's it at?
Don't know right now. I don't think we've done anything as far as reaching out to the county to, you know, talk about, we've got a representative from the TDC, on the TDC board, Mr. Ashbrook. I think he's brought it up to them, and I don't know where it is. I don't really want to get in a fight with the city right now.
Hey, so, good, good. And we don't want to see nobody get arrested.
No.
You say that's good. The reason I say that, it was a workshop scheduled for maybe two days, and it's been canceled, right? A workshop that y'all had set up for the nineteenth, the day of, for two days?
Right. The county could not meet on the nineteenth.
So they want to meet on their terms, if I'm not wrong.
I don't have any idea, but we wait.
So we got a double set up?
No. We're waiting to hear from the county when they can meet.
So everything revolved around the county. Okay. And I will cut and pull now, okay? I'm trying to be serious about this Florida statute. And what I presented was actually a past city-county workshop with some of y'all sitting on the board. Actually, Mr. Mayor, you was absent, you was on, but you was absent at that meeting. It was actually a year after this fifth penny had started to be collected. And the Florida statute states I've got to have a reason for the collection of this tax. You just can't say, I want to collect this for two years and go buy two brand-new tall hoods. You've got to have a reason. And on top of that, you have got to have an independent survey saying, we're going to get our bang for the buck. So if I'm going to collect, the first year this was collected was actually the expenditure for four hours' fill of the greens. Part of our lawsuit, page two. Now, the first year it was collected was two hundred and twenty-five thousand. That's all standing as a bag right there. Okay? If you add five years to that, at a minimum, they're sitting over, the county is sitting over there with one point two five million dollars of TDC money that was collected. Now, where is all that money at? Mr. Ashbrook, you sat on the board.
Yes, sir.
Y'all had these meetings quarterly, am I correct? To act of the statute states you will talk about the expenditures, talk about the budget. Have y'all, when is the last time y'all have met?
It's last month.
Did you get kind of a ballpark figure what's in the, what we have left?
It was more about planning for what's going to be done next year as far as marketing.
So no?
There was no discussion on recreation at that meeting?
No, I'm talking about dollar amounts. The dollar amounts is supposed to be discussed. And the TDC committee is nine sitting there. That is supposed to be, y'all are supposed to keep up with what money we have in reserve, where the money is being spent. And that's all in the statute. Now, so it, I'm just puzzled to why that we can't get any of our fair share for this great city.
Well, I think we all agree with that. We've just got to work on it in a way that we can get it. And so we'll, we know what we should be getting, but it's, I don't want to get in a war with the county. I'd just like to work with them and see if we can get it. So let's move on, Robert.
Okay, I'm going to finish.
We've got staff that needs to go back to work.
Okay, I'm going to finish it, Mr. Mayor. Actually, Mr. Mayor, you've actually voted in 2018 in Fedworth, in some committee meeting, for this fifth penny to be extended for five years. So you know just as much about it as anybody sitting up on this board. You voted to adopt this for another five years. Am I right?
I guess you say it, so I guess.
Y'all, y'all need to start doing your job. I appreciate y'all.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, come right up.
How everybody doing today?
Doing good, Dan.
I just want to bring one thing to y'all, to you now. I don't feel like it's right. Someone decided to run for a city position to sit there. You got to come up with $500 to be running that race. That ain't right, guys. That ain't right. Y'all know it ain't right. You shouldn't have to pay to run for a position on the county, the city, or the school. That's all I got.
I think that was done away with, wasn't it?
No. It's not that good. I talked to John Hammond at the, at the Survivor election, and guys, that's not right. I mean, I understand we need money for our city. And I don't have a problem trying to go do certain things to get money. But to tell an individual that it's all for them to sit in the seats that y'all are sitting in, they got to come up with $500?
Who controls that?
You guys, you guys control.
How's that work yet?
If I remember correctly, it can be changed by ordinance. I believe we discussed sometime around the last election. It was never adopted. If you would like, we can have the new city attorney pull that up and give you some ideas of what can be done.
Can you still do the signatures?
If you adopt it by ordinance, if I'm not mistaken, what you can do is you can have a standalone ordinance that allows for that.
Run by petition.
Petition.
And what you do, you get some of the petitions, you got to have signed. And if you fail to get your petition signed, then you pay your money. But give a person opportunity and chance if they want to run for that position. Because I mean, that's, it's just not, I don't know how you guys feel about it, but the way I see it, to ask a person, win, lose, or draw, they got to give $500. You know, where I come up there, you know, we call that strong law. You taking somebody's money. That ain't right, guys.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. We'll start with Mr. Langston. You got anything?
Yes, sir. I haven't got any phone calls on what we want to do with the tennis court back at the Washington, Washington Gym. I asked people in the community to let me know what they want to put back there. If not, I guess we'll keep the tennis court the way it is. But I'm going to hold off on that and try to see if we have anything, any answers after Christmas. And what about the lighting in the gym? Have we, have they started working on that yet?
No, sir. I spoke with Chris Mock yesterday from Current Solutions. He's expecting delivery this week. And actually, because they're behind, he's going to have his crews working next week. So he's going to get a key Friday or Monday from Mr. Anderson. And hopefully, when we get back.
Good, good. Well, I'd just like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. Enjoy yourself, be safe, and have fun.
Jim, with the change of meeting times, have we noticed anything that, are we going to start this effective New Year? Or right after the New Year? Or has anything been noticed that we have to meet?
I don't believe we have anything noticed at this point in time that has, that's going to conflict with that. We'll double check, but I think you're good.
Okay, then, leads me to, we do have one conflict, and that is our standing downtown redevelopment meeting is also at noon. Do we just want to meet at eleven o'clock?
That's fine, man.
You guys okay with that?
What's the date on that again?
The seventh of January. So we, we? Meetings before, before our regular meeting?
The PSJ.
Okay. All right. So Jim, do we have to note that somewhere on the website?
Can you repeat that again one time?
Eleven o'clock.
PSJ, our meeting.
First Tuesdays.
We always meet the first week, and normally, we meet at noon, so we'll move that to eleven.
We'll relay that to Mr. Furkin.
Regular meeting.
And another question for Jim, trash pickup. Have we completed our one last time, final pickup?
We're continuing to work with the code enforcement. We've probably had fifty or sixty of Mr. Graham's.
A bunch. Yeah, we did complete the initial or the final round. Now, we're just, as Mr. Anderson said, just doing code enforcement issues.
This is a special pickup.
Yes, that's correct.
We have to charge for.
That's correct.
Going utility bills.
So it is looking much better. Can I tell you it's going to stay that way every day? No, I can't. It's revolving every day.
I have one, just one particular citizen on Avenue F. I think two weeks ago I spoke to about that, and I was just wondering if that had gotten done.
Double check with me on the address after the meeting. I'll look at it for you very soon.
That's all I got, Mayor.
The tennis court, pickleball court issue. I know we didn't talk about that today. We talked about maybe voting on that the next meeting.
I'll tell you what. I talked to Superintendent Norton about partnering with us on it. I'm not sure, and I want to sit down with him again. I always find to catch him on the road or something, but sit down and see if he would partner with us. But he did say if our attorney would drop the lease, they'd lease it to us. But that means we've got all, we pay everything, you know? If we let them use it, if we light it, we pay for the lights, we're going to pay for the reconditioning of the courts and all of that. So I'd like, it would be nice, but it'd be even better if we, our trail grant money can get some lights there. That would work, that would be perfect. But there, he's ready to lease it to us, but I'd like to try to work with him about maybe partnering.
Or maybe the TDC would jump on the opportunity to help the city with this project and light it and refinish it.
That's probably an idea. Yeah. Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. So we're working on it, I guess, is the way I can put it.
Other than that, I'll just wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Do you have one thing elaborate on Commissioner Lowery's coming on the field? We do have some folks to refinish the current tennis court, depending on how you want to do it, strip or anything, less than $10,000, we wouldn't have to bid. So if you want that on for the next agenda, we can do that. It's up to the board's plan.
I would like, you know, we'd like to work with pickleball folks and the tennis folks, and I'd like to have some kind of agreement in place that dedicate a tennis court somewhere, a nice tennis court that they could go to and the pickleball people could go to. And try to keep everybody happy. We're not going to, but we'll try. So I'll try to have something maybe a little more concrete. And we'll have an attorney that can, you know, draft a contract of some sort.
When does TDC meet next? February this next month.
Okay. Commissioner Hoffman, you're on.
The only thing I have today was I want to say thank you for the ones that worked the Christmas parade. I know Mike was out there. There were several. I don't want to try and name them. I'll forget them all. But several of the city employees spent their time working the parade instead of enjoying the parade. I believe from all indications, I won, I once again won the best golf cart.
You didn't get the best costume.
That's a fact.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, that's true. But it was a really good parade, and I think the attendance was, I would think, probably twice as many people as last year. And I do want to remind our employees that we are having an employee appreciation luncheon Friday at 12:30. So please, plan to attend. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I've got a couple of things. First off, condolences to Commissioner Langston on grandfather Billy Quinn Senior, longtime friends of ours. He and his wife, Aladonia, were good people. Also, longtime loyal city employee Tommy Haddock passed away, I believe it was Sunday. So condolences to his family. He was just a nice guy, really was. So hated, hated, he suffered a long time of different things. But Christmas party, I've told him once, I'll tell him again, Commissioner Langston, Commissioner Hoffman, taking the lead on certain things on that party and saving the city a lot of money. So we certainly appreciate that. And to all the folks out there and city staff and everything, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody, and look forward to seeing you Friday. So with that being said, I will entertain most of you gentlemen.